Good evening, everyone. It's time for our Prairie Municipal Authority Meeting. I'm going to call it to order and we'll have roll calls.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. It is clear at forum. For our invocation tonight, we're having Mr. Perry Minister and Reverend Mike Strange. Mike.
Thank you. Good evening. Greetings on this very windy day. Please join me as we pray together. Lord, we know that you've blessed us in so many ways. You've given us so many good things. A great country, a great community, family, friends, schools, just so many things that sometimes we just take them for granted. We're sorry for that. We ask your forgiveness when we do that. We also know, Lord, that you've given us the example for what it means to be a servant. And so, we also know that you put us in situations sometimes where we have that opportunity to serve and to make a difference for good. We know that you bring people across our paths. We have the opportunity to help them and to serve them. We thank you for those opportunities. Lord, please be with this group tonight as they do their business and please guide them and help them in whatever way they need to be helped. Help them to be in a good spirit and in unity and in accord and help them to do what they need to do to be servants to the people of our community. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. First agenda, first item on our agenda, consent agenda. We just had to receive the improvements of our regular PMA meeting on May 5. What's your plea, Council?
Mr. Marshall.
Say your name.
No, two seconds.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled in regard to the PMA. Comments from those assembled. Seeing none, item five, proclamations, commendation reports inquiring by the Governor and Body. Council, do you have anything you need to report or question? Seeing none. Item six, notice then issuance of permit number WL-40521402888, commercial park water line extension of an eight-inch PVC water line to Perry Commercial Park. This extends our water from the, say, the vicinity of R&amp;N all the way down into the western side of the commercial park.
The extension from where, Lord, would you say, again?
From the area where R&amp;N is. That is at South Road, comes to there, then service line to them. We're going to extend it west into the park, deep in the park, serve the other lots.
It goes to Vance. It'll serve Vance.
I'm sorry, Bill, I had the wrong location. It's to serve Vance.
Right.
Extends east. No. Because the one runs up thirty seconds. All right. I'm sorry, I had the wrong part. It is the commercial park that'll be an eight-inch service line and water line to serve Vance and over toward the front end room. So it'll be going from west to east. I had the one in my mind and I'll put it in the other part. So, what's your plea, Council?
The ministers just need to reflect that they acknowledge we see, so I don't know that there's a motion needed.
New business? Item eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Take it.
Motion to second.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Now, we're going to have, it's 6:19, we're going to start the Prairie Council meeting. Those that will have a roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
We do have a forum. First item of business is consent agenda. Are there any items A through C that you need removed for further explanation, Council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled. Anyone here tonight who'd like to make comments before the City Council before we begin? Comments from those? Thank you. Item five, proclamation commendation report inquiring by the Governor and Body. Anyone need to make any comments before the Council? Questions? Anything? Item six, team members report.
With all the earthquakes we've been having, I think the question came up as to whether or not the City of Perry has earthquake coverage. So this is to report that, yes, we do have earthquake coverage through our insurance policy with the Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group in the amount of $1 million. So we have coverage. I'm not aware of any major damage or anything to any city facilities. There might have been some things knocked off the walls or something like that, but to my knowledge, I don't know that we've had anything major. Item two, John Vance has submitted a request for the waivers to the provisions of the protective covenants out in the Perry Commercial Park. The waivers have been requested for exterior construction material, landscaping, and fencing. And so, as provided for in the protective covenants, these waiver requests will be submitted and considered by the Development Committee. Calling all tennis players, the Lions Park tennis courts have been resurfaced and so they're just waiting and ready for tennis players to come out and play. And on a related note, Coach Solins, I'm sure, is very glad because he can now have tennis tournaments and they can invite in more teams and so that we have tennis courts at both Leo and Lions and so they'll be able to accommodate quite a few teams for their tournaments in the spring. So we feel like that's a real plus. Out in the industrial park, City Crews have pretty much completed the extension of the sewer line to serve the industrial park. And at some point, fairly soon, we'll start on the water line to serve out in the industrial park.
That's what I was planning.
Yeah. Our CBBG sewer replacement project, we were going to use City Crews to do that work. We've revisited that issue and feel like it's probably better to contract for that project. And so, we're working on getting the bid package prepared and sent out so that we can solicit bids and bring that back to the Council. Since it is a grant, we have to work through CBBG, the Department of Commerce, to make sure that we've got all the items that we're supposed to do checked off before we can actually, you know, start any work. So, but we're working through that. One of the things that we've done recently, I mean, with the sewer line out in the industrial park, we realized how much time, you know, a project like that takes. And then we get other calls for service that are just our regular calls for service that we sometimes have a hard time responding to. And so, really, in the best interest of all of our customers, we felt like bidding this project out was probably the best move for that. On the ball fields, we have plans on the table in City Hall that we can, everybody can come and take a look at. Preliminary plans are at 65 percent. So we're soliciting comments from all our utility departments and others that might have an interest in taking a look at those. And so, those comments will be sent back to PDG and they'll incorporate, we'll discuss those with them and incorporate the changes that need to be made before we proceed with the final plans. And of course, the final plans will then be brought back to the City Council for the Council to bless before we actually go out to bid. So that's at the point where the Council will see those again. But if you'd like to come by and look at the preliminary plans, they are at City Hall. The new Mike Chambers sign is here and we'll be scheduling the installation of that sign. I don't know if it'll be later this week. Brenda's at a conference and so I wanted to make sure she was here. So it'll either be late this, later this week or early next week. We'll work with the Journal to have a photograph and make sure that Mrs. Sattler and others who've expressed interest are invited and be a part of that. The City of Perry is hosting a wellness event for its employees where they can come in and get a personal health inventory. And so that'll be on Wednesday, its employee and their spouse and anyone who's on the city's health insurance. So that's a good way for, and it's at no cost to the employee, so that's a good way to maybe find out that, you know, there's some things that may, health-wise, need some attention given to and you can take that report to their doctors and have that checked out. Memorial Day, City Hall will be closed, and that's coming up a week from today, I guess it is, isn't it? So it's here before we know it. Cemetery is looking mighty fine. And since we didn't get any rain, I know Rita was a little bit worried if it rained that we wouldn't be able to get things all spiffed up and everything, but I think we'll be in good shape. But now it sounds like it's going to rain over the weekend, so it may be a little soggy out there for those who want to go to the cemetery. And the city pool opens the day after Memorial Day on Tuesday. And so, if you've been by there, it's nice bright blue. They've got it repainted and they'll be filling the pool fairly soon. And so, that water's going to be a little chilly, I have a feeling.
Is that the normal day that they open up?
Tuesday after Memorial Day. And just one more item that I didn't know about until, I think it was on Friday, in the legislature was House Bill 1875. And what that was, was to reduce the amount of what the Oklahoma Tax Commission retains for administering, for collecting and administering our sales tax. And so, the retention fee was cut in half. And so, what that means for the City of Perry, since it's been passed by both houses and now signed into law by the Governor, will receive, normally, we would pay $20,000 and so cutting that in half will realize a $10,000 plus to our budget as a result of that. Maybe a little higher because if our sales tax is higher, if our receipts are higher, then this amount may be higher. But anyway, that's good news. If we were Oklahoma City, 2.2 million makes a big difference for them.
I consider it was behind that.
Anyway, that's all I have to report on if there's any questions.
Item seven, our financial office, Mr. Mayor.
You guys have finances in your packet. Another pretty good month for us and overall as the city, you know, as we move on and we're getting about into the end of the year, we are cruising up on June 30th. Next item, we'll be back on talking on some budgets. We kind of did that last week. So I kind of told you guys then that we looked like we were going to finish up strong and we are. Our cash is holding very steady. I backed up a little bit from even where I had projected we were going to be at this point, so that is good. Really, sales tax collections are driving that in the general fund along with some additional hotel motel tax. I bet you all about to know. We were back up on that one. We were back up about $40,000 for the month in hotel motel tax collections. So looking good. As you look down through that budget, we're at about 84 percent of our budget year. So expenditure-wise, except for those departments that we expect some seasonality in, we should be running about somewhere around 84 percent. As you can see, you know, there's really only one department and that was the library piece, but we know what the library issues are and why that was over budget at this point. Just some capital work that we've done there. But operationally, if you look back at just our operational departments, we're setting the fines. The rest of the expenses are really right in line with what we would expect to be going on as of this year in the general fund. Flipping on over and looking at the PMA and where we set there, you know, we're coming into those last three months that our electric and our water, you know, and likewise our sewer is a default, but our electric and our water are going to come into usage. People are planting their gardens, they're using their water. It's dry, dry, dry. So, you know, we're going to see part of that out there. You know, we ought to be thankful for the water supply that we have. We were talking about that just a little bit beforehand. You know, I mean, there is water out there. If you go out and look at Perry Lake and if that was the only thing that we were relying on, we would be in desperate times. But thank goodness, you know, for some of the forethought and the work that went in many, many councils ago, you know, we are at a point where we do have water and that is something that not a lot of people have. You know, we work with communities that are struggling right now to figure out what they're going to do for water and full rationing and those kind of things. Luckily here, you know, that's not something that has become an issue yet. I'd say that one day it might not ever become an issue, but where we're sitting now, we are good. We're good on water. But overall, expenses, if you look down through there, you know, we're doing very strong on expenses. That water revenue, I will tell you, we will probably not hit that budget of water revenue even with the increase. And really, it was because of the excess water sales, you know, the outside water sales that we're not doing this year and that we've done in the past. And so, we will come in a little bit under revenue budget on the water, but overall, for the PMA, we'll still be strong at the end of the year. Take any questions? Somebody has?
Are we still selling water?
No.
No.
Okay.
At one time, we stopped.
But we've reinstituted water sales.
You mentioned something about, I think it was a couple, last time you were here, I think, and I was here at the same time.
Oh, that doesn't vary off. Sorry.
The, we'll talk about that one later. But you mentioned something about auditing some of the hotel motel.
Yes.
And is that, are we still pursuing that?
We are pursuing those, yes.
Okay.
And we're involved in that process.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you, Russ.
Yes.
Item eight, we have Steve Reddy here, he's going to present the, his proposal, he's superintendent of our wastewater treatment, he's back here, in pertaining to item eight of our budget. Hi.
All right. Does everybody have a copy?
They have at one time. They may not have brought their budget back, but I know they did.
Did we know?
We had to know those.
Yes, and we did.
Pages.
Yeah.
Capital out, they pages.
All right. Those should go in line with what I have here. Mr. Mayor?
Item eight in my book is Phil Nathan Davis.
Because we made a change in the agenda and I emailed that out after Thursday night, after I handed the books out, and I failed to bring hard copies of that. So everything else just moves down a number. And this is out of the, I'm sorry.
All right. We're good then.
Sorry, Stephen.
Are we going to take this out of order since Mr. Davis is here?
He's already standing.
Okay. All right.
I'm used to being out of order. Since I originally put this together, Mary has asked me to prioritize the things I think we really need to focus on. This, I realize is scary when you look at it, and I did apologize to her when I turned it in. The first item on my list is for backup power or backup generator. That's a broad number that we put in and as Mary and I discussed the other day, we need to have our power need assessed as far as what kind of power assessment we would need to run the water plant, the wastewater plant and the lift station. There is a possibility that if those requirements are similar, that we could just purchase one generator that was mounted to a trailer and then put a switchgear at each facility and use it as we needed to use it at each facility. Backup power is a requirement by the DEQ. And that's one of the problems with my budget is a lot of it is based on regulation. And some of those regulations are enforced and some of those regulations are not enforced. For years, inspectors inspected our facilities and did not list that as a deficiency. Through the last two inspections, they have listed that on the report as a deficiency. Any deficiency should be required to be absorbed within the next visit when they come. So they've been kind of lenient on that, but the issue is we never know how long that leniency may last. They may come in the next visit and say, you've got to have it now or we're, you know, we're going to start doing some serious paperwork on it. We, in the past, we've been blessed with incredible amount of elevated storage, which gives us a very good two or three-day water supply in the event of an emergency. But with other changes in regulations, we're not able to make good use of that storage. We can't keep water stored for extended periods of times because it makes other issues with our dissection byproducts. So I feel that this item should be a very high priority item when we look at this budget year. I've also requested some upgrades in our communication system. We originally installed the communication system with the capability to be upgraded and we made sure that that was emphasized in the original construction. We were able to add several items in the last year and there are some items that we'd like to add, especially to the Leighton-McMurtry pump station to help us monitor what goes on down there a little bit better. $10,000 is a kind of a general number because until you know exactly what you want to do, it's very difficult to nail down a price. The guy that does our communications has told me if I can get him a list of exactly what we want to do, that he can get me basically a quote saying exactly what that's going to cost. So when you see these numbers, when I prepare a budget, I try to prepare for worst-case scenario. Okay? So there's a good chance we could make some significant improvements with less than that. Another item within that is an issue that's come up several times in the past and that's where some security cameras at the water plant. The water plant is staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. However, if you go by what the EPA looks at as a secured facility, it's not a secure facility. It does not have a six-foot fence with razor wire. And there's also an easement that we have to give people access to be able to get through to their fields in the back. We also have an issue with raw water sales. We've taken steps to cut down on the damage that's done to our equipment by requiring them to come in every time they're there and leave their license and do some things like that. But that's also part of what has slowed down those sales to a certain extent. But we felt that was necessary because we were losing $4,000 or $5,000, you know, in one case, like within, you know, three different times within three, four-month period. So we had to do something to try to cut down on those losses. The next item I also feel is a priority, is listed in mine as other considerations. We currently have a maintenance contract on the south tower, which is at 15th and Boundary. And what that means is that on an annual basis, or in some cases, a bi-annual basis, a crew comes out, they go through that tower from the floor to the ceiling, they keep all the equipment working, all the lighting working, they clean out the tower and they generate a report on the overall condition of that tower. That tower was painted in the past year. Skyline Tower was also painted by accident. We're still trying to find out why in their records they have that tower listed as Skyline Tower. We don't, we can't seem to get to the bottom of that with them. But our other towers do have needs. There are federal regulations that require the conditions that these towers must be maintained in. And the resources that we have now within the city, we are not able or qualified to do that kind of work. A lot of it is dealing with rust control and painting and things like that. And for that reason, we need to very seriously consider getting all the other towers on a maintenance program like that. When you build these towers, you have the money and you build them, the overall maintenance of them is often overlooked. And they are a very high-dollar item when you start looking at performing maintenance. If you wanted to paint one of these other towers right now, it would probably be close to the $200,000 range or even more. Considering the fact that we don't have a little water savings account, that we can, you know, put money back in, to me, the most feasible way to deal with that issue is to get these other towers on a maintenance program. Right now, the south tower costs us, right in the general area, of $18,000 a year. The other two, the north tower, the 12-inch loop tower, would probably be very close to that or identical. The Skyline Tower would probably be less. I have requested numbers on that. They did come out. They inspected the north tower and inspected the other towers and as of today, I have not received their report about the overall condition of all of them. But I do know for a fact we have some issues, especially with Skyline Tower on the inside. Like I say, $18,000 a year per tower is probably a conservative estimate on what that'll cause. The next item's wastewater plant and lift station improvements. These issues mainly deal with sludge processing at the wastewater plant and some equipment that would remove debris from the wastewater stream at the lift station. The lift station also has some lighting items that we need to look at. Right now, there's no outside lighting whatsoever. And any kind of improvement to the existing lift station is difficult because of the depth of it. When you start looking at installing this equipment to remove this material, it very quickly gets really expensive. And when we discussed this, you know, we looked at some of these big items as maybe, you know, putting them aside right now and looking at a way to get some funds with some long-term financing. Again, this is one of those areas where what the DEQ and EPA call preliminary treatment is required. And we're able to meet that with the concept that the bar screens that we have at the lift station now, which are two very small bar screens. And anytime we get any kind of rain, that lift station is immediately submerged. And all the material that's washed in out of the system bypasses the bar screen and goes straight into where the pumps are and is pumped to the wastewater plant. And if any of you ever visit the wastewater plant, you'll very quickly notice anywhere At the wastewater plant, when the original expansion and upgrade was done at the wastewater plant in 1999, they installed the drying beds that are out there now. In the assessment that I've been able to find, they also were going to install a sludge thickener. And what a thickener does is basically you put this water with solids in the thickener and the heavy things will settle out and the water will go over the top. And drying beds are designed to handle sludge of a certain thickness or a certain concentration. For whatever reason, that equipment was not put in. And so now we're left with two options, either we put thin water on them or we basically hole sludge in the plant and then put that thickened sludge on them. The plant does not respond well to that second option. And so we're looking at ways to construct a piece of equipment that would actually do that for us. So every day, most of you probably don't know, a wastewater plant's actually a living facility. It's reproducing and you have to dispose of some of those bacteria to keep your plant in balance. So a piece of equipment like a thickener would allow us to put the amount we needed to get out of the plant into that piece of equipment every day. And then when it became so thick, the equipment wouldn't handle it, then we could put all that on the sludge beds at one time. The way they are now, they're just, they're so inefficient, I wouldn't even call them efficient in any way. It requires an incredible amount of man, time to keep, the solids have to be dried and removed by hand and then stored for 90 days and then land apply it. So this piece of equipment would allow us to actually make that an efficient process and help us to use that equipment the way that it was originally designed to be done. Again, that equipment is expensive. I mean, there's just no other way around it. Unfortunately, water and sewer is a very, very expensive business. And it would probably cost us $100,000 to $150,000 to deal with that, once we got the engineering cost and site preparation. They actually make a unit that could be brought in on a truck and set down and it would be ready to go. But there are costs involved in getting all that going. We'd have to get DEQ approval and things like that. Let me see what I have here.
What do you do with the dried?
We land apply it in the field, it's back behind the dog pound. And right now, we only have to test that, those solids at one time during the life of the Permian. That's a very, that works out very well for us. I've worked in places where you had to do that every week. And we just ran those tests and the total of those tests is $2,000. And I still need to sit down with the lab and determine, because a lot of the numbers, in my opinion, were out of compliance. All they require us to do is hold that sludge for 90 days. And I've been doing wastewater for 33 years and I've never seen that as an acceptable method of treatment. Okay? So it's going to be kind of interesting to see what happens when the DEQ gets these numbers and what they want to do about it. You know, it's an issue that every city deals with. A lot of cities have to pay to have those solids hauled off. And to be perfectly honest, if we had the equipment to remove the waste out of this sludge, I think the local agriculture community would take every bit of it off of our hands and we would never have to land apply it. It's usually very high nutrient content and you can apply it to the ground and then there's just regulations on how long you have to wait before you can put cattle or plant crops. This is a good source of nitrogen. So I think, right now, when we want to land apply these solids, we have to get Street over there, we have to get some big dump trucks and front end loaders, because we just don't have the equipment, we need to move it. And that usually takes a day out of their time as well.
Now Enid, don't they use theirs for fertilizer? Don't it go to a sewer plant? Does the plant that's, you see, going to Enid?
I was actually at Enid not long ago and they built a new plant and they're basically using the old plant as a sludge treatment facility or as a big digester. And I don't know what they're doing with it after that. But there are a lot of entities that get rid of, some actually are able to sell it. If you can treat it to a Class A, what they call a Class A level, it actually becomes a commodity and you can, you know, recover some of your costs that way. Let's see here.
So your priorities are the digester and the bar screen?
No, sir. That's just, I think that's something that we're going to have to look at and we're just going to have to continue to be inefficient until we find some way to get those funds. And again, our local DEQ office just closed out of Pocket City and now we're going to be dealing with the DEQ office out of Stillwater. And what you see happen is every time they change inspectors, each inspector has a different idea of the way things should be done. For four years, we were rolled up every quarter for not using those drying beds. When I took over the sewer plant, one of the first things we did was started using the drying beds again. But if you get any event of wet weather, it doesn't take more than a couple of weeks till all the drying beds are full and you can't get them dried and you have to put those solids in the existing legams. And the DEQ frowns upon that fairly heavily. But we've been able to get away with it up until this point, really, you know, you have no other option. So, other considerations, you know, what I think we should look at is we, you know, we are seeing some growth in the city. We're seeing some growth in the industrial park. And right now, the wastewater plant averages a flow of about 450,000 gallons a day. Once we get to the point where we're flowing 660,000 gallons a day, then we'll have to start submitting paperwork to the DEQ for a plant expansion or upgrade. If and when that time comes, which I put on here, I've got to update my one, three and five-year plan and get up to Mary, there's a good chance that all this could be incorporated into a new plant construction and it could all be done at one time, much cheaper than we can do it out of mind. So for that reason, that is not a priority at this time. Do you want me just to do the priority stuff?
No, I can carry on.
It might save you a lot of time. I'm going to get along with it.
Maybe just the priority stuff then.
Yeah. I have requested $10,000 for communication alarm systems for the water plant, the sewer plant. At this particular time, there are no type of alarm or communication system whatsoever. There is equipment there that is not working, is outdated and it will have to be replaced. In the past, if we had a problem, it could actually call out and let somebody know that there's a problem. The way it is right now, you find out about the problem the next morning when you go to the plant and you've got big issues, you've got some bad problems. Again, this number, that's a high number. For probably $2,000 or $3,000, we could put just a call box that would just monitor a couple of things and calls. And then in the future, eventually, what I'd like to have is everything tied into the water plant. There's someone at the water plant at all times that could be tied in with the water plant communication system where they could actually monitor the wastewater plant and the lift station the same way we monitor the water. The lift station improvements, $50,000 for lighting and electrical systems and the flow monitoring equipment is not working over there. Again, I'm not going to list that as a priority item. We've kind of, we've kind of just made do, you know, as we, this facility continues to kind of deteriorate. All, any facility dealing with sewage, it just gets worse and worse and worse. And we've already had to make some improvements to the ladder system over there. We had some runs that rusted out. And again, the other considerations for the bar screen equipment that would remove that debris in a grit chamber that would settle the heavy solids out before it got into the plant, high dollar, high dollar items.
Your lift station, can you give a kind of an idea of how long you think it would be before you'd need to replace that lift station? Is it in need of it now?
The facility itself, the structure are pretty much intact. You have a lot of corrosion where the raw sewage is and that's, you know, that's just normal.
How about your rails to lift the pumps up and down?
The railing, the lift station itself, the dry well that houses the pumps and the pit outside, the railing, the ladders do not meet osha's steep. Okay? They're very, very steep. There's been a lot of lighting that was there in the past that's just been removed and they just kind of wire nutted wires together and there's places where liquid is seeping through the walls. And when the time comes, we want to do something with that facility, I would remove the pumps that are there now and put in submersible pumps and, you know, they're a lot easier to deal with. And that way, when it floods, you don't, you know, you could probably actually run those fast enough to outrun the flood if the plant went and handled it. We can divert wastewater at the plant to keep our flow where we need to. The pumps, overall, they're in good working condition. We have one pump that we have a problem with right now and we're going to try to actually get to it this week. We've been very, very busy and, you know, that's one of the things, when we get to this next item, is going to be about, you know, what we can do functionally, you know, with what we have right now. And that's when we get to the maintenance department. I've not been involved in the maintenance department until December. We have an excellent maintenance crew here. We're blessed, trust me. There's four guys and the supervisor, that's all we have. And I've been doing a lot of work out there and if you look at the overall volume of the work between the low caves and the water leaks, sewer stoppages, the work at the industrial park, they get an incredible amount of work done for basically what's a four-man crew. So, you know, the question that we have to ask ourselves, you know, and when I wrote this, we were still under the assumption that we were going to have to do the grant project. There had been a lot of discussion about, you know, yes, like the industrial park, yes, we can do that. We can put in a sewer line. And we did really well for about three weeks, which myself and another employee handled basically all the calls, all the service calls. But inevitably, things come up. You know, you get big leaks or, you know, the meters freeze up around the square and we're pulled off of those projects. And once you get pulled off of them, it may take you a week to get back to them. And that incurs a lot of extra expense in equipment that we've rented and things like that. So there are two options on the maintenance part of it. And those options you're dealing with are, you know, do we want to have a crew to where we can do these projects and maintain the systems the way they are now? Or do we want to just do what we're doing now? The first option is very expensive because there's a lot of equipment that we don't have and there's manpower that we don't have. And when you need additional manpower, you need additional vehicles, you know, and so that turns into one of those kind of bottomless bits where you could spend as much as you wanted to, which I don't think anybody wants to spend what I put on here. So manpower is an issue. We already know, we've still got to put in the water line on the park. We just put sewer in and then we've got to put the water line into vents. And then we don't know what, you know, may come up between now and then. We know we've got a lot of sewer issues we've got to deal with. And talks with Dr. Really, we're fixing to start putting together a water system map and he would like for us to GPS all the valves and all the hydrants and that would probably take two guys a year. So with just the load that we have now, we could use one. If we wanted to assume that role of doing grant projects and new construction, then we're probably looking for. And those individuals need to have a certain skill set. And, you know, that can often be hard to find and then you've got to look at, you know, what do you pay individuals with that skill set? So, you know, like I say, it's one of those areas where it's just, it's hard to pin down enough. You know, like I say, I try to assess it on the worst case scenario. If we're going to be asked to do both and maintain the plants and everything at some point, there's going to be, there's going to be a catastrophic failure in one faction of it. I've got a backlog of plant maintenance right now that'd probably take me a month to catch up on. So, you know, we've got a lot of work to be done. All of the equipment that I've listed in under issue one are, you know, the first option, new vehicles, new vehicles are going to be an option on either one of them. We've definitely got some vehicle issues. I'm not putting any of these in this particular section under priority. If we were going to do those things, we would need to purchase a track hoe. If you purchase a track hoe, you've got to have a trailer and a truck to move the track hoe. And then you've got to have maintenance, okay, on all that equipment. So again, your costs start, they start adding up very quickly.
How do we move the dozer that we bought last year?
We actually got a trailer, Street has a trailer that they can move the dozer. The track hoe of the size like we were renting, you would have to have a semi and a CDL and a trailer for it. Now, you know, one of the, track hoe is a high dollar item, even used track hoes are high dollar items. But there's also a benefit in that it wouldn't, it could, you know, just be used in water and sewer. It could be used to demolish old houses. It could be used by Street, it could probably be used at the airport. It could be used in a lot of different ways other than just the wastewater department. Then, like I say, again, if we determine exactly what we want, then we can seek out specific things and probably be able to narrow that price range down a whole, whole lot. But for now, that's going to go on one of those, you know, let's look at some type of long-term solution for. Shoring or entrenching, I feel are a priority. At the present time, we only have one trench box and it's six foot by six foot. When we were working over off Delaware, right when I first assumed the duties of superintendent, at one point, we were 27 feet deep over there. And I called and had a trench box rented that we could stack ours on top of that gave us some adequate protection. Again, with this item, there are a lot of different options.
Good thing OSHA didn't hear about that.
Well, you know, and whether OSHA's there or not, you know, I mean, at one point, we just stopped and I said, we're not, we're not doing anything else.
You couldn't bench that?
Do what now?
You couldn't bench it?
It was in an alley. So we probably would have had to go into the homeowner's, you know, backyard. So the stable actually here is quite stable for the most part, as long as it's not wet, it's very stable.
Or earthquake.
With this item, there are a lot of different options. There are a lot of different sized boxes, a lot of different materials, but once you But once you get to a certain size, then you've got to have something that can actually drag it down the trench and, and the backhoe is only going to do so much. So, there are options where you can actually buy like hydraulic jacks and you can use plywood or plate steel or whatever and basically build the box the way you need it. A lot of times, especially when you're laying pipe, it's very difficult to use a trench box because the trench box is shorter than the pipe. So, you have to dig way out and get the pipe under. If we had the hydraulic system, then we could, we could put the hydraulic piers where we needed them for the job that we were doing. They'd be much easily, much easier to be moved as you just, you basically, you know, pull them in and put them on a truck, put your plywood or whatever on trailer and haul it off. So, there are options out there available to us, I think, where we can, we can keep those costs minimal and still keep our workers safe. The next item was, we had some issues with the jet machine, but things would happen. We kind of were forced to deal with those issues a little ahead of time. So, I've kind of removed those requests from the item. Let me see here. Well, there's also a request on here for a vector truck. We, we currently have what we call a potholer and we have that courtesy of Ditch Witch. But it's basically an excavator, a hydraulic excavator. You take a pressure line hose and you, you break the ground away and you, you suck it up into the vacuum part of it. However, when you, once you get to certain depths or once you get to a certain consistency of material, the unit we have is basically ineffective. We have a lot of sewer issues in this town. A lot of those sewer issues deal with roots or grease or things like that. Ideally, when you clean a stoppage, as this material comes down the line, you would want to vacuum that, as much of that material out as you can. Right now, we can't do it. And there's no really effective way to do it because once you break that blockage, that water starts moving at a pretty good velocity. So, you can't put buckets or, and you certainly can't have anybody in the hole. That cannot happen. What we do now, what we see a lot of times is we, we do a stoppage in the, in the 700 block and a day later, there's a stoppage in the 500 block. And then we clear that one and there's a stop, because all we're doing is moving that stoppage from, from section to section until it gets to a large enough section of pipe that it won't block it up. You might be astounded at what comes through this sewer system. Taken off the bar screen, especially after a rain, bath towels, cloth, all kinds of clothing, sunglasses, you know, toys, all kinds of things you wouldn't imagine. But they get in the sewer system and they wreak havoc. And if, if you can't remove them, then you've got to try to get it all the way through the city till it gets to the lift station. Again, a good vector truck, an adequate vector truck is not, is not, is not a, a cheap piece of equipment. They're very expensive.
We have a lot of groundwater penetration, do you think, in our system?
Yes, sir, we do. And we haven't seen a lot of it because we've been in a drought for three years. But every time we do get a rain, the lift station will usually be flooded within 30 minutes. And like I say, a lot of times, it's when that happens. And now, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the sewer system assessment, but it's, it's, it's massive. I mean, it's, you know, and especially after a rains, when you get a lot of that material in there. And then your screens are plugged, so it goes right over and into the pumps and, and then you have pump issues and you have issues at the plant. A strong vector would also be able to clean storm sewers. It would also, you know, it'd be able to do a lot of other things for the city. You could maybe even use it like a, like a street cleaner. You'd go run the square and around the curb and just vacuum everything out. It's got, a good one's got a large enough hose that you can get just about, you know, anything through it.
My biggest concern is with our aging system with tree roots and groundwater infiltration in the system. We should, we've got to eliminate the groundwater and stormwater from getting in our sanitary sewer to save our station and our hood and our system.
And those, those kind of things, again, except, you know, first, we, you know, and that's, we're going to get to, you know, camera and equipment here eventually, but we, we really need to be able to get in and camera these lines to really determine where the big problems are. We jetted a line the other day on Wakefield, a guy that's had a kind of a continuing problem. And it was a very short run. It took us two different attempts to get through it. And on the second attempt, as we pulled the line back, we actually pulled out two pieces of clay pipe about this big. So, you've got, there are places in this city where there is no pipe. It's just brown dirt is all it is. There's a, there are just numerous places in the city where, where property owners' taps have pushed through the sewer main. Then we've, and that, we've been fortunate we hadn't had rain because every time it rains, you'd lose more and more material into the sewer. And, and those dropped taps are also another big issue, you know, that we're going to have to address. We're dealing with an issue right now with that over on Hillside. And we're, we're trying to get our camera in there to get a good enough picture of it and get proof to, to show exactly whose line it is that has dropped. But until we get some resolution, we're going to continue to have problems on that line, just, you know. That's actually where I was Wednesday night. I was over there, you know, jetting that line out. So, vector system. If we were looking at that first option of the, our crews doing the construction, you know, we would have to have a, a better dump truck than we have. We just have one small dump truck that we have to get the tools out every time we want to start it. It's, it's old and, and, but, you know, it, it's adequate for what we kind of do right now, but most of the time, we actually have to get Street or, you know, to come in and haul dirt for us and things like that. Also, we'd have to have another backhoe because we effectively need to have two crews. If you only have one piece of equipment for eight guys, then that's not going to really increase your productivity if everybody's waiting, you know, on the equipment. So, that ends that option. And the second option on the first, the first item, I have listed that as a priority item. We, we have an issue with, with trucks. Right now, the jet machine is being pulled by a very old one ton flat bed truck that has some mechanical issues. That, that vehicle is inadequate to pull a piece of equipment with that kind of weight, especially when it's loaded down with water. It, it's very difficult to back up, you know, into a grass easement with, with that particular pickup. We've got several pickups that have come out of the, the, the inventory of the, what we were going to get rid of and had funds poured back into them. We've got a lot of three-quarter ton or half-ton pickups with big steel flat beds on them and they're expected to pull 20,000 pound pieces of equipment. So, we've had a lot of issues in the last year with transmissions, with, with this, you know, with things like that. We need to have the trucks that are suited for the kind of work that, that, that they need to do. And really, for the jet machine and the potholer, what we need is more like a ton and a half of vehicle to effectively haul those around. So, I've listed getting one of those as a priority. We're probably looking somewhere in the 30, $60,000 range, depending on the age of it, the shape of it. We'd like to have a new one, but, you know, I understand that there, you know, there's only so much to go around and I'm probably already asking for more, way more than my fair share. But when it comes to, to safety, especially, it's not so much the safety of the guys pulling the jet machines, it's the safety of everybody else if something happens and that, that jet machine can't be stopped or it can't be moved, then, then you're dealing with some very bad issues. And I've seen some things in the past where you had inadequate equipment and, and very near misses American test of steel water when a trailer came loose and, and. So, I want to make sure that we have the trucks that we need to do the job. Right now, I, I could, I could probably take $20,000 and just spend it on the trucks we have. And two of our normal fleet aren't running right now. One of them needs a new rear end and a new motor and I don't know what all the other one needs. But we've kind of continually in the past, just been giving whatever we could get and just continually have to pour money into these vehicles. And then, once we poured all that money into these vehicles, what we have is a truck that's worth $1,500 that's going to need $5,000 of repairs in the next year because it's doing a job that it can't do. It's not designed to do that job. So, I would put a truck as a, as a, as a high priority. Again, personnel, it would be great. We could have one, we could have more, that would be better. We, we can get more done, the more we have. We can do more of this preventive work in the sewer system. We can do more of the locating and raising valves and GPS and valves. Facility for the maintenance crew, right now, the facility that we have, I don't know when the original shop was constructed, but it's been added on to twice in the past. Both times it's been added on to, they added at a slope and we have a, a lot of pipe material, hydrants, things like that, that right now, they're just laying around the yard, just forgotten where to put them. PVC, plastic pipes especially are very sensitive to sunlight. And we've got racks and racks of pipes sitting out in sunlight and, and to be honest with you, I don't want to put it in the ground because I know I'll be the one out there fixing it when it breaks. We, we desperately need a, a place to store these materials and our supplies and our equipment. I feel that the facility that we have now could be fairly economically converted into like a warehouse where we can put all of our materials in and keep them organized and inventory. But what that would do would basically put all of our equipment outside. In the winter time especially, the, the potholer, the jet machine, they have to be kept inside. There's things on them that could freeze up. The, the heating in the building is inadequate, the insulation is inadequate. So, consequently, we spend 400, $500 a month on the gas bill, you know, for that building. And even in the summertime, it's a lot. We're still trying to figure out why because nothing over there to use the gas. We're trying to figure that out. What, what we're looking at and what we need is, is a facility very similar to what R&amp;N just built behind their main facility. A 30 by 50 building, preferably with a lean-to on the side where we could put our tractors and stuff under the lean-to. And with large enough doors where we can get the track hoe, the backhoe in there and the other things that right now are, you'd have to see it with your, on eyes to see how you get the backhoe in there sometimes and try to get it where you can get anything else in there. We don't have any, any type of adequate shop to do work on any of the equipment that we have now. Everything's just basically put on the floor and worked on. A new facility, at this time, I'm not going to list it as a priority and Vernon will probably kill me for that, but, but it's something that's going to have to be looked at in the near future. I could inventory the pipe that's in the yard right now and tell you how much it would cost to replace. And it might not be too far off from what the facility costs. So, that's just something that we're going to have to, to deal with in the very near future. Pump capability. At the present time, we have a four-inch hydraulic pump that we use when we have a water leak to, to pump out the hole. On a lot of occasions, the leak is, is faster than the pump and valves either don't exist or we can't locate them in time to get these leaks isolated. And so, this four-inch pump, it's, it's already been rebuilt twice and it's starting to leak hydraulic fluid and we need to look at replacing that pump. And I would list this as a priority item. We need really to upgrade it to a six-inch submersible. The estimated cost is about $20,000. It, it runs off of a hydraulic power pack that we actually have. We, we, we had one and took it and the good folks at Ditch Witch gave us some parts and we got it up and running. And we also would use that pump to clean the lagoons at the water plant and, and for other situations where we need something pumped out at a rapid rate. So, I would list that, that particular item as something that we really, we really need. Sewer line inspection equipment, as you may or may not know, we currently, we have a camera system. It, it's, it's a decent camera system, but the issues that we have with it are it's all fed on about a quarter inch piece of wire. If you're going through a four-inch line, you can usually feed quite a bit and get that camera a pretty good ways up that line. Once you get to a six-inch line, after about 200 feet, the camera will start to try to go up the walls and it'll stop moving forward. Okay? In this, these cameras can get very expensive. We just had Luckinville come out and TV a line over all 14th. And the, the setup that they had with a robotic camera with capabilities to inspect seams at pipes and others, it can look up and down sideways. Their particular setup was $90,000. Now, a lot of that cost was in the fan that housed it. They, they make robot units that fit basically in a large box that could slide into a pickup truck. Other than that, the equipment that we have, there is additional equipment that we could purchase. And I'm, I'm going to make this a priority because I know the other, that's something else that we're going to have to look at on kind of a long-term basis. There's equipment that is made where we can run our jet hose through the line, pull back a cable and hook a cable up to the camera and pull the cable and pull the camera through the line. Okay, that'll, that'll eliminate the problem of not being able to get up into lines. But we'll still only have capability to TV what's directly in front of us. So, when you come to someone's tap, you can't look up and see if there's roots in it. When you come to a leak in the pipe, you can't look up and see if the seam is failed or if it's a crack or, or, or things like that. But I would request as a priority at least, being able to get the equipment to where we can get the camera through all the lines that we need to get the camera through.
Is that the CCTV?
Sir?
Is that the CCTV?
Yes, sir.
How much did the, how much does it cost typically to have Luckinville do that?
I don't have to build, it was $2 a mile and $150 an hour. And they actually had to come out twice on that, on that same one because we, we hit a mask, we couldn't get their camera through and they had to come back the next day with their cutter and, and cut through it. And then their cutter wouldn't cut through it, so we had to get one of our old ones and kind of get it working. And we got through it and were able to, I think, prove without. And we got through it and were able to, I think, prove without a shadow of a doubt to the homeowner that it was his problem because pretty much nothing but roots coming out of his sewer line. But again, with our camera, all you're going to see is stuff in them. You're not going to be able to...
You're not going to see in front of you.
Right. Now, we can locate our camera. It does emit a beacon, so we can determine exactly where it is, okay? That's a useful tool. But if you're looking at doing the kind of work that we're looking to do and there's, if I'm not mistaken, over 40 miles of sewer line in Perry. So if you're looking at, you're going to have to have two guys to run the jet machine and hook up cables and pull them back. You know, a unit that'd be truck mounted, one guy could pretty much go out there and do it himself. And you would get a lot more information from it. But right now, I'd be satisfied with just the sled and the cables and the things like that to make it where we can get some view of what we have now. Training funds, not going to list that as a priority right now. I'd like to get a lot of our maintenance guys, the training that they need to repair hydrants, to calibrate flow meters, things like that. There is training available in the area where we could do that. Every time we have to have a hydrant reworked, it costs us anywhere from $800 to $1,500. And I think we could, we'd be better served applying that to get an education for our guys to where they could handle any kind of a problem that came up with a hydrant or with a valve or with a lot of the electronics and things that we have on our equipment. Safety, I'm not going to list it as a priority because I think if we were good stewards of our money, maybe there's a lot of these things that we could get. We need a lot of lanyards and harnesses. I know we had a kind of a safety audit not long ago and we were supposed to be getting new harnesses and stuff, but I've never had any indication that those were actually purchased. Working in trenches and manholes is a very, very dangerous occupation. And I haven't looked at the statistics lately, but it used to be more dangerous than being a firefighter. They lost more men a year in manholes and trenches than a lot of police and fire lost. We need to make sure that when we're in these confined spaces that we have the things that we need. Okay? So I requested $10,000. Like I said, I'm not going to list that as a priority because we might purchase them one at a time and do it over a two or three-year period. A GPS, we have no GPS in the water department whatsoever. It's another item that could be used by a lot of departments. The cost here is high, but the type of GPS we need needs to be very accurate. If you're talking about locating water valves and manholes and things like that, you can't hit within 15 meters. You know, you might be out there all night with a shovel looking for that thing.
You need it within a meter or you need it closer than that?
The one that we were looking at and trying to remember, we had a discussion with Dr. Really, he said somewhere from $10,000 to $14,000.
You can get sub-meter or...
Do what now?
Is that sub-meter accuracy or...
Yes, that's very accurate. And, you know, all the manholes have been GPSed, but for every manhole, there's probably four or five water valves. And I can tell you from personal experience that probably 80% of the water valves in this city are either buried or they've laid asphalt over them. And as a result, and I have requested information on where water auditing, but there have been occasions where we had a leak and couldn't isolate it and basically had to let the elevated towers run empty to lose enough pressure where we could get in there and fix the leak. Okay? And that's bad for the city overall. We don't lose system-wide pressure, but the people in that neighborhood certainly do. And over the course of a year, two years, or three years, the water loss from something like that can just be staggering. You know, you're talking about emptying, you know, 150,000 or 200,000 gallons out of a tower in six hours, four hours. So getting these valves located, getting them operational, getting them raised to ground level and getting them on a control map where you can actually, you know, know where they are, we need a good GPS. However, I've not listed that as a priority because as of yet, Dr. Really hadn't said, hey, yeah, let's go do it. Okay? So that's kind of one of those things where we'll kind of cross that bridge when we come to it. Trailer repairs and upgrades, right now, I'm not going to list this as a priority either. Most of the trailers that we have at our facility are, again, they're donated from Ditch which. Almost all of them have some minor problems, wiring problems. We've got a couple that have a problem with the braking system. Again, that's something that we may can go little at a time out of the regular budget and get them brought up to where they need to be so that we can safely haul them around town. But at some point, we're going to have to look at replacing or spending some substantial funds to make sure that all those trailers are as safe as they need to be. The last item, thank you. Overall budget, usually in the overall budget, we request a 10% increase from year to year. Over the last two years, what we've experienced is an extreme increase in cost of a lot of the chemicals that we use at the water plant. We've seen a very high increase on the cost of materials that we use in the maintenance department. At least twice last year, I was asked to get a sheet together on what we spent on a particular job. And we call our dealer in Oklahoma City and he'll put together, we'll tell him what we use and he'll put together a list of what it would actually cost us. And almost without fail, we get that list back and he said that the prices have gone up 15%. Okay? So we're either going to have to have additional funding or we're going to have less and less inventory in our maintenance department. So, you know, due to that, I'm requesting a little extra increase in just our overall operating budget. So that's all I have.
I have several questions if I may.
Sure.
Okay, so...
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
Go ahead.
So one of the first things we talked about was these sunglasses. I'm on my side this time. I'm usually over there where the worst...
It's the halo.
This evening.
It's not on me, but it's...
So one of the things that you mentioned was this backup generator. And you said that DEQ required, required you to have a backup generator?
Yes, sir. All public treatment facilities should have backup power.
And today, we don't have a backup generator at all. We just rely on our holding capacity to get us through. What kind of power requirements does it need?
That's something that we would have to have an engineer come in and assess.
We need a local engineer to assess that.
Yeah, the options you have to look at are, okay, and I know this sounds kind of complicated, but it is. Do we want to just be able to run the office and the communication system and monitor what's going on? Okay? Do we want to be able to do that and run one of the three treatment trains at the plant and one booster pump to maintain pressure? Or do we want enough power to run the whole facility, whatever was needed, all at one time? Those are going to be three very different, cost-wise, three very, very different issues.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of asking the question because the number we see here looked like a pretty high-capacity generator. Probably should be able to run your entire facility.
Yes, sir.
But you may not need all that. Right? We may not just be essentials and so that's why I was asking.
That's correct. And like I say, that would be, again, it's like a worst-case scenario, okay? You know, that's the maximum it should cost. And I'm going to be honest, it may cost more.
We could be compliant with DEQ with something less than this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
My next question, I'm not sure what you have there, but in our, in the paper that I have that I'm looking at, we have two columns. We have the proposed budget and we have the optional.
Right. I don't have that.
It looked like some of the things that you're saying was a priority were in one column when it should have been in the other and vice versa.
Well, yeah, and that's, you know, that's, Mary and I have not had time to really sit down and bash those things out.
I suppose that's what this is for.
Yeah.
To bash it out, okay. So there are some things that looks like I may need to switch back and forth.
Right.
Okay. The next question I have is this inspection camera. I assume that that price that you have in there includes a truck or van or whatever?
It could, yes. It could be, it could be truck, a truck, let me get to it.
You got $150,000 here.
Yeah, $150,000.
You said that Luckinville was $90?
Yeah, theirs was $90, around $90,000.
Just for the system itself, right? Just for the robotic camera?
They had a van and a system.
Oh, they had a van.
Yeah. And, you know, it has computers in it. And they said one of the, actually, one of their biggest costs was the software.
Yeah, the mapping software?
Yep, the operating software for the system. Like I say, they make a unit that'll fit in a box and you could slide it into the back of a pickup. Very difficult to get people to give you a price on one of those if you're not right there wanting to buy. So like I said, that range, low range would cover, you know, a robotic system that was not enclosed in a, you know, unhoused and mobile compared to one that was in a vehicle and housed and with all the computer and the backup power and all the things that it needs.
And then, and that makes sense. And the GPS also makes sense to me, but in the water department, you have a GPS listed for 15 and a street have one listed for 14. Was there a difference in the need there or is it just...
Well, there's a, let me get to that. What, when we originally started, we checked some prices and we were coming up with a price around $8,000, somewhere in there. But, and that was on eBay. But when we started really investigating it, it was like 15 years old. Okay? So, you know, you can buy cheaper, buy used and maybe not have the guarantee that it works as accurately as it does, but we wouldn't estimate it being over 14 for an adequate unit and 10 being that low end for an adequate unit. Again, that would kind of be determined by, you know, what we would work out here. Do we want a new unit or do we just want something that we can use to get the ball rolling on that project?
But Steve, you don't need one GPS, right?
Yes, yes. And like I said, that could be, you know, street could use it, electric could use it, you know, a bunch of different departments.
And do those systems come with the software where you can...
I believe, I believe that price, you'd be able to pretty much take it out of the box and use it for exactly what we want to use it for.
It looks like the heavy-duty one-half-ton truck and the shoring are safety items.
Yes, sir. The shoring is, and I had them go ahead and come pick up the trench box that we were using in the industrial part, it was costing us $2,000 a month. And, you know, if we have an emergency come up, I can have one here usually within four to six hours. The little box we've got right now isn't good for a whole lot.
Is it about, good for about 10 feet and that's about it?
Yes, yes, sir. And it's only good, you know, if you were putting in a piece of sewer line, say 13 feet long, you'd be able to put it maybe directly where the men were working and that would be it. Ideally, you'd want the whole trench secure. With the hydraulic system, you would have the ability to make it as long as you needed, as high as you needed. They make separate boxes that go around manholes, but you could also, you could come up with a way to shore that up as well with hydraulic system.
What method of shoring are you quoting here on this 40?
This, this here, let me find it. The price I quoted, if I remember right, was effectively for two aluminum eight-by-eight boxes.
Okay.
Okay?
Drag with your backhoe or trackhoe.
Like I say, once you get to a certain size and depth, then you have the issue of, you know, can we move it? Can we pull it through the trench? So that's one of me, the hydraulic system, even though it may take a little more time to, you have to break it down and move it and set it up. And I've had my guys complain about the time and I told them, well, I'd better be taking that time than taking the time to go to somebody's funeral.
Yeah, I've had two men buried in trenches.
And once you're buried, it's over. You know, a cubic yard of sand weighs 2,700 pounds. I don't care how strong you think you are, if you get buried, you hear chances are you're going to suffocate. And that's not a chance I'm willing to take.
I don't remember, I know it varies from state to state, but in Oklahoma, do you remember the depth where you have to start using five foot?
Five foot.
And what percentage of our trenches do you think would be beyond five feet?
Do what now?
What percentage of our trenches that we do during the course of a year would be beyond, deeper than five feet?
Water is generally right in that range. It's the sewer where you get into issues. There's places in town, it's off the top of my head, where sewer lines are 25, 30-foot deep.
You want your sewers, if you can, modern construction of sewer lines, is you want them a minimum of eight feet.
Okay, so any sewer work really should be a little deeper than five.
So if you're crossing a water line, you'll be four feet below it, right? To prevent contamination, yeah.
That's exactly right. Anybody else?
That's all my questions.
I have a question. You say the heating out there is gas. Since we're selling electricity, is there a reason why we're not using electricity instead of gas?
Just the way the construction...
Yeah, and it's, it's not, if you went in there, it's not like, oh, wow, look at this nice heating system. It's like the stuff that's kind of been thrown together over the years. And one of the big heaters is actually electric. And then you have some other gas ones. And we had a situation a couple of years ago where the electric one got so hot it melted part of the equipment on the jet machine. Again, that's because that building's so short, there's not adequate space to store equipment in there and keep it, keep free of the heating and the lighting and everything else. So, yeah, that's...
Is this in your shop building or are you...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we do overall maintenance on all of our vehicles?
Yes.
We may want to look at buying one of those units, a heating unit you can burn, recycle all along. That's very efficient.
I think we need to look at getting them a shop.
Yeah, well, it's, I'll be looking at our overall facilities.
We got to do that.
To basically, in anticipation of acquisition of the current Vance building.
The whole time I've been sitting here thinking about that.
So that'll be a review that we'll need to start, take a look, just inventory what we have and how we might best be able to utilize that facility and combine some, you know, there'd be some, you know, more than one department obviously could be located there, but obviously fleet would be there. You know, that'd be the obvious one that would go there. And so there may be some other departments that would be relocated there too, so.
You made a comment about, two things I have a question about. You made a comment, if you get this GPS system, I believe what you're referring to, it would take two guys, an extended amount of time.
Yes.
So it's not the fact that we're going to buy the GPS, we got to put it into effect.
Yes, for what Dr. Really's wanting to do, we want to locate every water valve in Perry and have a good enough coordinate that we can put it on what we call a control map. Our control maps right now are a nightmare. When we have especially a water leak, we have to get three different maps in three different periods of time because there's stuff that was put in in the 70s that when the system was upgraded, was not put on to the map with the upgrade. So there are some places where you might have three water lines all running within five feet of each other and only one of them's on... So there are some places where you might have three water lines all running within five feet of each other and only one of them's on the map.
So I guess what I'm asking is, if we, if we were to purchase a GPS system, do we have the manpower to go do this or does it go require-
Slowly, slowly.
Whatever they have free time, right?
And, and, you know, we try to- Well, it's, you know, it's, the water department sometimes can be a lot like the fire department. You know, you have, you have two or three days where there's no leaks and there's no sewer stoppages. So you start, you know, organizing your shop and you start taking care of some of the work, work order backlog that you may have or dealing with meter changes. And then you have sometimes for two or three weeks at a time where you don't even have time to sit down for lunch. So when, when Dr. Really started doing the sewer assessment, he asked me the question. He said, how many people do you have dedicated strictly to sewer? And I said, none. Nope. I can't dedicate people one way or the other when there's only four of them.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so, you know, if, if we could free up two guys with a GPS and, and the problem is you can't take the GPS and find the valve. You have to find the valve.
Correct.
And then GPS it. Finding valves can be very, very difficult. Sometimes, you know, sometimes one guy could do it with a shovel. Sometimes it might take three guys with a backhoe and you have to locate the whole area and dig up the whole street corner to find it. In my opinion, that, that money would be very well spent. Because like I said, you look at the overall water loss. I was horrified the first time I saw these guys fix a six-inch leak hot, as we call it, hot, with water coming out of it. It takes a lot of guts, you know, to get in there and do it. And then there's always, you know, you always have, if you can't shut the pressure down, you may can get the leak to stop, but can you get it really, you know, the repair seeded? Is it gonna start leaking again in a couple of days because you repaired it under pressure? Finding those valves, raising those valves up to ground level, you know, that, that may be a project that we can incorporate with other departments. You know, I might could send one guy and then have one guy from street assist them, you know, something like that. But I'm real slow about involving other people's resources, you know, sticking to the ones I've got. Even with, even with the GPS, it's gonna be a slow, time-consuming process.
Okay, so what's required of us tonight for this?
Just to hear him.
To hear him, one of the things that we do need to do as a group, or, you know, I don't know, tonight may not be the best night to do it, but we do need to get some consensus on-
At some point, we gotta decide which one of these are really the one we need to do.
And actually on all the capital items.
Right.
So, so that's something, and I don't know if, you know, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but, you know, if you're prepared to do that tonight, great. If you're not, then, then we may need to, you know. And one of the things that's critical to that, to those decisions is our rate increases. To know whether or not there's support for the proposed rate increases, the two percent in water and sewer and garbage is really just a pass-through. And then-
Yeah, I looked at, I saw that.
And then there's been, you know, some discussion about electric. There's, you know, nothing proposed in the budget, but it also limits you on what you have available for discretionary money, too, so.
And I also think that, like the water plant, I've been thinking about this for a long time, we need to have it fenced. It should be fenced.
Ideally, it would be a secure facility.
And lighting, but light.
If you had it fenced, the cameras wouldn't be such a, such a high priority. But, you know, and that's, with bulk water cells, I think we've kind of, we've kind of got a good grasp on it now because they actually have to come in, leave their license. The hydrant's locked where nobody can just pull up and fill up. Theft is an issue. Theft of water is an issue. And we've talked recently about some citizens that have seen trucks filling up in different parts of town. But the main reason we wanted the cameras is because of the damage that was being done. Somebody could just pull up and, and get water. My operators cannot be standing at the door watching them all the time. They have duties that they're required to perform. And that was gonna help us. If somebody drove off still hooked up to the hydrant and didn't leave a water ticket, which they surely wouldn't, as evidenced, then we would have some video proof to come back and say, hey, we're fixing to send you a bill for forty-eight hundred dollars, you know, to repair this. You know, the, the two, two different times that it was damaged would have paid for the camera. And both those times, well, one of those times we did find out who did it, the other time we didn't.
Well, and I watch too much TV probably, but I always worry about people tampering with our water.
Well, that, 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 I shouldn't, I'm not gonna say that's an issue.
I know.
Thank you, Steve.
Now, that, that's, it would take a lot to tamper with the public water supply and make it unsafe, a lot, more than most people are willing to do, so.
Thank you very, very much. Any other questions, Steve, or county?
All right. Thank you all for your kind attention. If you have any questions or anything you're curious about, I'm available.
Thank you for your time and effort. We appreciate it. A lot of hard work. Any other items pertaining to item eight? Okay, we're gonna move on to item nine. It is to consider exercising city's option to renew the waste, solid waste and disposal contract with Davis Cemetery by approval of the second option. That is, when we approved the contracts last year, where there is an option to extend the contract with a two percent increase. Or if we didn't, we'd have to go back out and bid on this item. And y'all know what that is. Any questions? Any discussion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Question?
Amendment.
Yeah, second option. We have a second. You have a question?
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner. Kent. Johnson.
Yes. Mr. Davis, any comments?
We'd like to thank the council for their support. And I'd like to think we're doing a good job and we'd be sure to know about it. We had a good year. As far as safety goes, didn't leave no arms, no limbs of any kind. I think everybody did a good job. We're thankful for our job, so, thank you.
We especially appreciate your help on cleanup days that we've had. That's, that's really good.
Thanks again.
You got the contract signed there, Brian?
Yes, I've got the first signed by you.
We're good to go. Thank you, sir. He had to make a hot trip down here this evening.
He had to take it along with him.
Thank you again. Item ten, consider approval of work order for master services agreement with Garber LLC. What this is, we had an agreement for them to do work, help us with the sidewalk project and determining what was going on there. It was an octet seed agreement. We need them to do more work in this area. And so that is, and so it's just by an hourly rate. Do you have some input that you need to provide?
The, all the hourly rate and all of that is in the master services agreement. And so this is basically just to extend their work on the courthouse square project.
When we said not to exceed, what was it? How much, sixty thousand?
I don't, I didn't, I don't think it was that high, but it could-
That was the CNG.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, are we gonna set a limit here or are we just gonna?
Well, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but it says something in here that it was estimated to be around forty-five hundred dollars. It just, but it says estimated.
Well, I mean, I-
That may have been, I think that was the first amount.
This is in work order two.
Okay, yeah.
But I wasn't clear if this meant, the total, it says a total amount paid to Garber under this agreement is estimated to be forty-five hundred. I don't know if that means that's forty-five hundred above what we've already paid or if that's forty-five hundred just under this work order.
That'd be above what we've paid.
Okay, so just for work order two, it'd be forty-five hundred.
That's right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion or questions, council? Vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner. Yes. Johnson.
Item eleven is to approve professional services letter agreement with CBEW Professional Group LLC to perform the 2013-2014 fiscal year audit for the city and its related public authority. This is a company we've had two years now. This is their third, be their third audit, I believe. You can see the expenses. They're the same as they were last year for the audit they did last year. So this is to approve that professional services letter agreement.
Motion to approve. Same.
Discussion?
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner. Yes. Johnson.
Next item is from the hospital authority. It is to approve some trustee physicians and to approve Bruce Thompson. It's not, I don't know if he's listening, your deal there as the chief of staff physician for the city council. I mean, for the hospital as their chief of staff. So we'll have to take these one item at a time. So first of all, would be for the chief of staff position, be Dr. Bruce Thompson.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, discussion?
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner. Yes. Johnson.
Second item is to approve the reappointment of Donna Parrish to trustee physician four. She is nominated first. First time for a four-year term and this to extend the term.
I'm moving to reappoint Donna Parrish. Second.
Discussion?
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner. Yes. Johnson.
Third item in this area is Johnny Fuller, reappointed trustee physician number eight, nominated by trustees of the hospital, one-year term.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner. Yes. Johnson.
Yes. Next item is Linda Franklin, reappointment to trustee physician number nine.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Oops, he's not here. Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner. Yes.
Okay, we'll notify the hospital of these appointments. Item thirteen has been handed out to, it is resolution 201406. What we're gonna do is we're nominating Mary Rupp for this position on the OMRA Retirement Fund Board.
Unless, unless there's some member of the council-
Any of you would like to-
Would like to-
Serve on the retirement fund board?
I would move to approve for Mary. I would say that one is that.
It's just the nomination, so. I know.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner. Yes. Johnson.
Yes.
You're appointed.
Nominee.
Nominee, we're appointed, we're appointed. We're nominating her to the board. Thank you very much. Continue discussion of city ordinances relating to oil, gas drilling and the city limits and near city water shafts provide direction, if any, to city management. Councilman Norman brought this up first time and been researched down on it. You can see the narrative there. Discussion this item can be, number one, we can do inspections, visual inspections of those sites as if there's leaks or if there's a damage been done to them and notify those companies and charge them a fee for that inspection service. We really do not inspect the equipment itself as though if it's functioning properly or it's safe or not safe. What we do is look and see if we feel like there's a point of contamination that would affect our city or lots or blocks or whatever. So this article in our code, I might say to you that we could even discuss at some point not allowing drilling at all within the city limits of Perry. That would not include the, the outlying properties of Perry, the city of Perry. We can restrict it at any location we want to.
Who would do any inspection?
That would be-
Probably Wayne and Jason Clardy.
Again, we're not doing equipment inspection.
Right, but I mean-
To see if there's any leaks or damage or anything. We can visually see.
Didn't we also have a fee or a fine or something like that that if they have a well, they have to pay every year?
It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar inspection fee.
Yeah.
I think, isn't it? Wasn't it? Is that right?
Well, I mean, I would think with all this being new and happening and all these different companies coming in and out, I mean, I would like to ask that they get inspected.
Well, I mean, we have, we already have eleven wells within the city limits.
That have been operating?
That are currently operating.
And we're inspecting those?
We're not inspecting those. We have not inspected those.
Say, any city limits are on city property.
They're in city limits.
In city limits.
And those have been operating for how long? Long, long time?
A long time, some of them. Again, though, we can restrict drilling within the city limits or on city property.
What about on tribal property? Nothing.
We have no authority there as far as that's concerned.
Well, it would all depend how that property is held. If it's held in trust, we would have no authority if it was, if it was held in fee. Or in a capacity other than in trust, we could regulate it.
What about property that's brought into the city? Would that be grandfathered out?
No, I mean, if it was annexed into the city, then that would be subject to whatever regulation you, you want to have.
What is current regulation?
Now, if the well was already in place, then, then, then that well would be, that well would be grandfathered.
Well, I was thinking about the one like out to the country club. It's been there a long time, hasn't it? So that wouldn't be, I think we brought that in after-
I don't even know if that property, the country club's not in the corporate limits, so is that fairway?
No, the housing station.
Okay.
There's been all the-
One crossing my house.
Yeah, that's been there for a long time.
And that's in the city limits.
So then that wouldn't, that would be a fee on that.
That would be an inspection fee.
That may not be.
Well, we're not very used to it. We're on Quell Creek.
Is that listed?
Yeah.
But it would be, that would be under this inspection fee.
Not if it was brought in. If it was built after that, I mean, before that.
Yes.
Once, once it's in the city limits, then it would, the code would apply.
There's none of them built before we had a city.
No, but I mean-
What you're saying is the one out in Fairway, we annexed that portion.
And it was already there.
The well was already there.
We still can inspect that well.
We could probably still inspect it for health, safety welfare, but for instance, if there was a regulation that required, you know, a berm or an earthen pit around it, I mean, we can't enforce regulations. If it's already done, already producing, we can't come in and, and enforce new regulation retroactively. However, I do think that, that, that we could provide it as an annual inspection, go out there and inspect it.
I mean, we couldn't charge a fee for that.
Well, if we inspect, we could. If we inspect, we could.
The, the new regulations for the berm and all that, that comes under the corporation commission. And they're, they're the ones really getting that through EPA to make sure they do that. If, if we feel like they are endangering to the community, we can contact the EPA or we can contact the-
Inspector, probably the corporation.
Corporation commission to, to get them to enforce that or possibly.
I think, I think the interesting thing is in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine years I've been here, there really hasn't been an issue. I mean, we did have some saltwater spills up at the airport property and they paid damages for that.
Very minor, though.
Yeah, minor damages. Uh, we have had, uh, they used to always have bonds up. I, I don't know if they have, uh, if they have bonds. Some of them have continuing bonds, some have, uh, certificates of deposit or let, a guarantee, uh, letters with the, with the banks. But we haven't had a whole lot of issues about, uh, oil and gas wells. The, the real reason for bringing this up is if there's some, uh, we wanted to tell you that, that if you wanted to regulate it further, you could. In fact, you could regulate it so much that you could ban it. But, you know, most of the communities that, that have mineral interests outside and they're familiar with oil and gas, it's not something that's, uh, that's rejected. I mean, no one wants a, uh, a pumping jack next to them. And, and as long as protection is made there, and we do have protection in our ordinance, everyone has been fairly comfortable with it.
Well, the way I read this, uh, item thirteen, uh, what's wrote here is that we're talking about future drilling. We're not talking about any, any existing inspections or anything. I don't see any of that in here. I, I thought this was more about what are we gonna do about if someone wants to drill in the city limits?
It, 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 it can be about that. Yes, it can be about that. Really, the purpose of this is to discuss oil and gas drilling in the city limits. The regulations that we currently have, the, the regulation. Do you want us to do anything? Would you like to see anything?
Is there anywhere in, inside the corporate city limits that they could drill well right now, if they least do?
Sure.
Is there, where?
Think on, uh, on, uh, you could drill on.
Off a locust?
A large amount of, uh, of Malzahn's property.
He would answer.
I mean, a large amount.
Depending on what kind of technology they use.
The question is, is, is how big are the tracks, you know?
I mean, it's gonna have to be, it's pretty restrictive because it's gotta be four hundred feet away from anything in a residential area. It's gotta be a hundred and fifty feet from any permanent structure in this other zone.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think there's much area inside the city limits.
Inside, if you're talking about the platted.
Exactly. There's, there's not much place I know of inside the city limits.
Plus, you gotta have a hundred percent homeowner.
I would agree.
Or landowner corporation, so, I mean, it's.
They only have the quiet hour from like nine o'clock to six, they can't drill.
Seven, seven, seven.
So it doesn't look like it's impossible, but, so there's, there's special cases we could do it, but I.
I think this too is that we're, we're, uh, we can direct, uh, city staff to do visual inspections and we can't charge that fee.
Well, and for new, and for new, new installations, it looks like that there is, uh, you know, there's gotta be a site plan submitted, so I'm sh, and then there's gonna be a hearing and all that kinda stuff. So it's gonna be under a lot of scrutiny if they wanna do it. So we're not, I, I don't think we're telling the citizens it's impossible, but I think it's making it. Where everybody should be satisfied with the outcome once it's done.
I think they'd rather pay fees if someone's not at the city limits to do directional drilling.
Well, the new directional drilling, they should have drills inside the city limits.
That's awesome stuff.
I love it.
Any other questions or comments? Any, any direction you want to give to city manager? Do we have a consensus on that?
Do we need to approve, is this a new thing or is it?
No, no, no.
Existing.
No, just any comments.
No, we just need to be doing the inspection.
We can re, restart those inspections.
Uh, I'll work with, um, the fire chief and with the building, uh, with Jason and Wayne and, um, we'll have, you know, checklist or something will need to be developed, you know, the things that we want to, to, um, take a look at. And, um, you know, we may need some, uh, additional expertise, you know, we may not have, um, you know, the expertise needed to actually, you know, do what we need to do. So we may need to, like, check with, um, you know, the Corporation Commission, you know, what do they, what do they see as, you know, the items that could be looked at, you know, checked, so. I would think in the, you know, and then also researching, make sure these wells are all still owned by the same company that we have on the list. So I'd say sixty days, if you could give sixty days, given the current.
Most of that online. The Corporation Commission has a website.
Further questions or comment? Thank you. Item fifteen, consider approval of First Amendment to lease consolidation.
What about fourteen?
We done fourteen. Wrong fifteen.
His numbers are different.
Change your, change your, uh, for the agreement with the hospital for the property to fifteen.
How about Ben's? We all got this version. Use ours.
Okay.
Are you on fourteen?
Are you on fourteen?
No, fourteen.
Item fourteen, you're booked, Will. Uh, consider approval of First Amendment to the lease consolidation amendment agreement with the Perry Municipal Hospital Authority. Uh, as y'all know, at one time, the, uh, the nursing home property was, uh, put up for sale. The sale didn't happen and since then, the hospital's requested to have that property included in their lease agreement with the city again because their master plan, which is being done and will be probably finalized, the first draft of it has been completed and I reviewed it today as a matter of fact. Uh, does include this property as part of the campus and the hospital for future growth. And, uh, so they're asking that you approve this lease consolidation to include that nursing home property on the website.
Well, anybody else that have a better vested interest in the hospital? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Bill, you're item fifteen. Dixie, you're item sixteen. Discussion of a request for H three S Leasing LLC to take action as appropriate, include, including but not limited to the approval of First Amendment of the Economic Development Agreement of March eighteen, two thousand thirteen. Would you step in there, sir?
No, I did. Three S Leasing spent a lot of money on that road. Uh, they spent a, a lot more money on that road than, than what was allocated in the contract. I think many of us that went out there and looked at it saw it, but that was finally confirmed, uh, with, with how much they spent. The, the number was more like, the number I heard was three hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's only three hundred thousand, I'd say.
You know, if, if, you know, we bought the property for, uh, for two thousand three hundred and fifty. We sold it in this transaction for, for essentially ten thousand and if they in fact spent three hundred thousand on it, we sold it for considerably more than that. Uh, so we made a really good deal, uh, I would say. Uh, their business model, uh, has changed and, uh, they're at this time, uh, not sure, uh, that they're going to come. Uh, but they might come or they would like to sell the property. And if we wanted, they would be willing to give us an, an option to rebuy it. I say, why rebuy it? I mean, at this point, uh, the, the, the road was built, uh, we got a really good, uh, deal out of it. I mean, if you wanted to rebuy it, that would be, that would be fine, but, you know, uh, uh, they, they also could sell it to a, to a third party and that would be an entity that could operate that property. They, they would need to get, they've given us an option for a hundred and forty-five thousand for fifteen acres, so that certainly says what they're gonna sell the property for and anyone that would spend a hundred and forty-five thousand for that property would, would be someone of some significance. Uh, i- if you look at the First Amendment that I wrote, you know, all of the, uh, real amendments, you know, normally when you sell property, you sell it and then the person can do with it what they want. Sometimes we enter into economic development agreements where we don't sell it for what we think is the fair market value or really what we're trying to get out of it is the economic development, you know, and that's the, and that's the corporation moving in and doing something. Here, we really got both. We sold it for a really good price, you know, and we put in it, you need to come in and set up, you know, within six months of closing. What they've asked for in this agreement is, is nine, first of all, they have held off closing the transaction. And I think we originally entered into this in two thousand twelve, is that right? At the end of the year. So as you can tell, the, the transaction hasn't closed, although the money has been in the bank and the road has been, been done. Uh, they would like to have nine months from and after the closing to either locate or to, uh, or to sell it to a, a third party, during which time they give us a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar option. Uh, and then we would have that until they would either build there or, uh, they would sell it to a third party. Uh, we have already installed the sewer, uh, but I provided a little bit of time, uh, for us to install the water. We haven't really, uh, finished the water yet and then, and then we would have a little bit of time, uh, to install the electric, but not until somebody located there. So really, part of the agreement is, uh, it's putting off time for us, it's putting off time, uh, for them. We don't have to do anything in addition. Uh, on page six, I have the, the written amendment. I, I took what he asked for and tried to, uh, tried to structure it the best I could for us. Uh, now, you sent it to him.
Yes, um, I mailed it to, um, to their attorney, who is also a owner in the company and, uh, asked to hear back from them by four today if they had any comments and I did not hear back.
Okay.
So I'm assuming.
This is essentially what they asked for.
I think so too.
And, and I suppose what we're saying is, you know, we think this is, uh, we think it's a reasonable request. I mean, uh, I suppose we could hold their feet to the fire, but, you know, if there's one company that we've dealt with that really has performed, uh, it would be this one and, uh, I think treating them fairly, uh, would be appropriate.
I'd have no problem giving them that much time. I'd rather them go ahead and buy it than having to buy it back.
Yeah.
And, uh,
and like I've said to you before, the only hesitation I have is who they would sell it to.
I think we need to have some kind of, um.
They still have to do a, uh, like a site plan or something with this.
Yeah, they, they would still have to, they'd still have to do a site plan, so we would still have control there.
I just don't want it, like I told you, a chicken plucking factory or something like.
Yeah, we don't want a chicken.
Well, they'd still have to submit a site plan for review and approval.
I mean, they could sell it.
With the new industrial.
They could still sell it.
The chances are they probably will sell.
Yeah, I think they would too.
That's probably what's going to happen.
But if someone's gonna come in and buy it, they're gonna make sure that their business is gonna be acceptable with us.
It wouldn't have to be.
But if they could build it, then there is out. So, I mean, what kinda good business?
They can build it now, though.
No, they can't.
Well, they, they still have to submit a site plan and the site plan has to be approved.
By both the planning commission and the industry.
Yes.
Yes.
But that's just plot, right?
Well, yeah.
It would show what, what they plan to do.
Yeah, we could just deny that.
They can't build till we accept.
They have land they can't build that.
If they're, if they're, if they're gonna spend that kinda money, they're gonna make sure that their business is acceptable to the city.
They're gonna want an ROI of this.
That's the only thing I was worried about, was having control over what company.
And, and I share that concern too, um, but they do have property now that's, um, now it has a road that is, they have road on two sides, have sewer line to it and they'll have a water line to it. So the property.
Be approved.
Could be more valuable now, possibly, and so that should be helpful to them to hopefully find a buyer.
And I'd rather them find a buyer than us.
There you go.
What happens, Bryce, if it's nine months and nothing happens?
Uh, well.
They don't sell it, they don't buy it.
It's extended for nine, what happens is that the expiration of that nine months, if they don't build there, then, then they have to market it in attempt to, uh, in attempt to sell it, but they're gonna close immediately. They're closing, they're, they're buying it immediately and we'll take down our twenty-five thousand dollars.
At the end of nine months?
No, immediately. This transaction's gonna close right now.
Oh, okay.
And that starts, I'm sorry, yeah, I probably should've said that. Good point. That starts the ticker, okay? They then have nine months to develop it, okay, and to come in, but if they don't, then after that nine-month period, they must use their good faith and best efforts to actively market and sell the property. Now, will it sell? I don't know. During that time, we have an option to buy the property if we want to. Let's say that we have a, we have a prospect that we would like to locate here and they're willing to buy that property. Well, they can talk to us 'cause we have an option and we can actively market this, we can actively market this and if they haven't sold it, then we just tender them a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and we have the property, then we can sell to a third party. And, you know, we may be willing to take a small loss to the extent that it's a, uh, a company that we would like to locate. So I really think we've got, you know, all the benefits here of, it would've been great if they would've moved in, you know, immediately, but, uh, that didn't work out. What we did get is we got an incredible road.
Yeah, that road's thirty feet wide.
I kinda believe they missed the estimate on that road. That's their business.
I do remember.
Remember the corn plant.
I do.
So, don't bring it up.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, Bryce. Who maintains that piece of property?
Cut and screw cut here?
For half, while this nine months is going on?
Well, they're gonna own it.
It'll be them.
Who's gonna maintain it, I ask you?
Well, 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 they own, they own it. They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to mow it, they're gonna have to take care of it because they own it.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's inside the corporate limits, so it's subject to the, to the twelve-inch rule on, you know, weeds and, and all of that.
Now, we just got this permit for the water line. It says we should have that completed in three months. Is that feasible?
I, I think so. Water will be, um, not as difficult. You know, sewer, uh, we had to really, because of the grade, the elevations and everything, the sewer was a, a bit of a, of a challenge. But water is much easier.
Make a motion, we approve the lease. Second.
What's been second? Anywhere quite a little comment?
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Was that item sixteen?
That was sixteen.
Where we at?
Wrong, new business. New business, Bill, item sixteen to you?
No, you shut up over there. Thunder down twenty-two thirteen.
Twenty, twenty-two sixteen.
That's no big.
No, we scored twenty-two sixteen.
Questions? Uh, new business.
That's the last minute of the game.
I know.
I'm going to, uh.
Jason, have a seat.
Convening of the Executive Services Perk of the Discussion Negotiations Collective Bargaining Agreements with the Police and Fire Collective Bargaining Unit.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Wayne, we're not gonna give you right now.
Time to get on.